Please call the meeting to order if we can stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for coming. We have no visitors wishing to speak tonight. We do have a special committee report from the Technology Committee. Dr. Shumpf.
Thank you for the opportunity to update you on our District Technology Committee. We've met two times already this school year and it's a representative group of about 20 people. That's on it, teachers, administrators, our tech department. We started our year off looking closely at the strategic plan and what type of action steps and initiatives were part of technology and that's where we started to move forward. I just want to set that context that in our first meeting, we did a lot of brainstorming and figuring out what are the tasks to accomplish these action steps. So in our diverse group, we had a lot of different ideas and then we resorted those into, here's our ones that we think are the best out there. There are four items I'll share today and I'll walk you through it. I'm taking my notes from something that's called Talking Points. This is the first time our District Committee has a uniform notes that all the members can go back to their schools because we have the four different sites and share the same information. In the past, I think, information was shared and it was helpful, but we're very explicit about what are the things that people need to know about and have on their radar for the future, so I'll be talking from the Talking Points. There are four items, the first one is about whatever I was talking about with the strategic plan. There are two main action steps that are, I'll say, technology-related. One of them, they're both in learning and achievement. One of them involves having progressive technology and I definitely know this district could done a lot of things such as Google, you know, Chrome and using a platform and having those Chromebooks in kids' hands early on before any other district. So one of the things Superintendent Pinella talked about is how can we be more progressive again? So we've done some different things. So that's one of the initiatives that we're charged with throughout this year and to next year. The other area is about professional development, so it's important to gain or obtain this sort of technology that can use to enhance learning, not to really supplant it, but to support it. And we talked a lot about and we have some set action steps around professional development. You'll notice back on this board here, when we met this last meeting, each one of those is a task. And a way that our group vetted it was, we looked at each one and said, you know, how much do you support this from the bottom zero to 10? And then how much is this, you know, task attainable? And that goes from left to right, zero to 10. So you could see on that upright quadrant, that was where everybody put a little mark. So we were able to analyze each task individually, post it up on the board, and then when you see the ones that are a little lower or out of the way, we had a conversation with the people at the meeting to say, how can we support this or how can this be changed in a way that's more attainable? So we might have been too lofty in the expectation where it might have been something that we had to figure out. So that just shows you that we did a vetting process to get a really strong understanding. At the end of the session, we took possibilities and dwindled it down to six for that first objective about progressive technology on the left side and on the right side, we have six tasks that we'll be working on the rest of this year in 2019. So some of these things we've done already and I'll talk briefly about that, but going through that process, when we talk about strategic planning and you recognize that, it takes a lot of time and effort and it takes a lot of facilitating and getting feedback and we invested a lot of time. The first meeting and the second meeting, half of the time was really surrounding, let's finalize something that we're all comfortable with, that we can do and help our district to move forward with technology. Number two is something that historically has happened in our district with our tech committee and that's a chance for each school in some way to demonstrate and show some of the technology that's being used in the classrooms. Oftentimes, I know these board meetings too, we've done some technology with you, like virtual reality and that's an exciting opportunity. So during that meeting, each school, under the leadership of the Library and Media Specialist, they each demonstrated 30 minutes or had some video or information to show that. So some of the things that were captured in the Talking Points at the high school, we've been doing a lot with Flip Classroom and you saw that presentation, I want to say it might have been two meetings ago, where they're doing some of the teaching at home and using EdPuzzle as a way to do that. The other piece to that is apps for education and they've done a lot of work at the high school specifically with Google Classroom as a way to expand use and connection with the students. At the middle school, we have our Innovation Lab that there's been a lot of work with the green screen, the new TV studio, some of the Ozobots and Spheros and we still work with Thimble, a local startup company that does STEM kits. And something interesting at the middle school was something called breakout boxes. So when you've heard of the term "an escape room" that you have to go in and answer these questions, there's something called breakout boxes that are academic related and you have to get a combination. So in classrooms at the middle school, we've started to use that with social studies and mathematics that students are working as a group and they're trying to figure something out to break into this box or break out of the box, but the concept's been received well. At Smallwood, there's a lot of things going on. One thing they were able to do is for a plant project, they set up Google Docs with links and ways you can go in to do research. So Mrs. Michelle.
Unger.
Unger. She's worked with the third grade teachers for this plant unit and they were able to set up Google Slides in a way and add pictures, so that's been a positive thing. And they've done something with Tech Tuesday, so on every Tuesday at Smallwood, they have a group of students throughout every grade level. It's really a cross-section of the learners and they're exposing them to different types of makerspace material or STEM material or STEAM material so that they could get a better grasp of how that's working and we can expand that in the future. At Windermere, you've heard of Ozobots before where it's coding and this little robot will follow a path. They've moved that to another step where they're working on the nervous system with students and voluntary and involuntary movement. And recently too, they did a Google Hangout where they had a geologist out in the field interacting and answering pre-selected questions that were made up from the students. So it was an opportunity that they could see someone on a screen, almost like a Skype, but it's someone from the field. So that was an enhanced way to teach. One thing we did is have conversation after all those presentations and oftentimes I find it's important to look at what are those things that are common? So we did realize that we use Overdrive, which is a system to get out books digitally and we do that at all sites. Google Expedition, I talked about virtual reality. We've been able to do that in all the buildings and Donna Freymeyer, you know, Technology Integration Specialist, has been at each site one day a week and we're able to uniformly have kids have these experiences that they would not typically be able to have. And video use, and I think you would attest to that, we have a lot of presentations that will have some video. At all schools, we're doing a lot with video, it could be TV announcements to anything else, which is nice to see and it's a great way to capture things. There are some differences and these aren't always negative, it's just different things. One is problem solving, that they happen differently in different places, different experiences that kids may have. And STEM and STEAM, I've talked about that already a couple times. So that's occurring everywhere, how it's occurring or the uniformity of it is different. We know there's good things happening, but that was something that was recognized. We're doing coding as well, so the concept of if it be a robot that you're setting up to do a task or again, doing something that might draw something, it's happening in different places, but it might not be aligned. And the last piece, technology across buildings consistently, that alignment or specific language, I call it digital literacy. We might talk about different software programs or skills that kids are doing and that might be slightly different. So these are things that we feel as a committee by knowing what's common and what's working and what we might be able to accentuate and what are some things we might want to look at and say, is it worth unilaterally setting up a STEM program through our science standards? That might be something we look at. There's two more, so three is something we've done, the first meeting and the second meeting, is looking at progressive technology. So as I explained, that's one of our goals and action steps that we'll be working on. Our first meeting, we had IBM come in to show us, it's really IBM, it's artificial intelligence and it's for educators, there's a specific program. So we just wanted to have some practitioners look at this and it's a way to bring your data together and it gets to help you as an educator and to help the student. This particular presentation was called VBRIC, which was a video program. So as I alluded to, a common thing was we're doing Flip Classroom, a lot of video. Picture Netflix or Hulu, some type of program that you'll go on to watch something. We would have our own sort of VBRIC system for our district and you could house your own videos for Flip Classroom or other ones that you could add to it with links. Right now, we use a variety of ways to produce it and/or store it. So that was a presentation that was interesting and we also do this to gain more feedback. What's the pros and the cons of this? What are questions? So anyone that was in the room that saw the presentation for either of those two things, we're gaining a sense and a pulse from those people, you know, would this work here? Will this help teaching and learning? What are some other obstacles? So that seemed to be helpful. There was something else called Spark that was shared and that I'll say is more like a social media approach that you're talking or talking with someone from somewhere else and communicating or in your own classroom, communicating with other people. People are willing to maybe pilot something like this, but that was another aspect of the tech, really progressive technology. And the last piece, we do have a May 10th meeting, so that's our third meeting for this year. We'll be starting to prioritize what of these 12 do we want to start working on first and then proceed into next school year. The other thing we wanted to do, because we're looking at progressive technology and we have choices and we've done this different times, we're going to survey the people that are going to be there and say, what might you want to see? Do you want to see another presenter? Do you want to have, you know, like CDW come in and show us the top technology that's out there? What's the best thing? Do you want students to demonstrate some of the technology? So we're going to survey our members of the committee and then plan at least half of that day to be either viewing or being part of some of the hands-on technology. We are moving towards, you know, that progressive piece, we're even working more with Google and they're offering us a lot of different pilots and great opportunities for our students. Next week, we have the augmented learning, which is a little different than this, it's where you can see, say, a volcano in this classroom. They're coming to go to every single school to demonstrate this and work. Our teachers won't necessarily be using it, but they're going to work with our students. So I think we're on a positive trajectory there and it's exciting. We also have to keep focused on the teaching and learning that we're not just doing bells and whistles just because that's what we should be doing. It should be really supporting the learning and just creating opportunities that are present. So that's my update. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Do we have any other committee meetings? All right, and then bring it over to Superintendent.
Thank you. Dr. Ilk is here tonight as our first presenter to give us an update on physical education, health, as well as athletics.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you once again for allowing me to have the opportunity to present in front of you and give you an update of our health, physical education, and athletics programs for the current year. So first, I'd like to start out a little bit with the outline of the presentation. As you know, we've gone through the process of looking at the strategic plan and I sat on that committee of going through the strategic plan. So my presentation today is really the outline of our strategic plan and looking at the subcommittees and things that really came out based upon that as well. So you'll see the framework of today's presentation for looking at learning and achievement both in health and physical education as well as athletics. And then looking at student life from the perspective, I also have a student representative here that will talk about one of our activities as well. And then also looking at Amherst Pride, Pride within our health, physical education program as well as Pride within our program. So first, I'd like to start with the priority one, which is learning and achievement. And the first program that I want to be talking about is Platform, which is a cloud-based physical fitness software that we use currently at the physical education program at the high school as well as with our athletics. The great thing with Platform, we're in our first year, as I said, it's a cloud-based software system. I like to use it almost as a personal trainer in your pocket. There's also an app that our students can download for their phones, tablets, they can take with them when they go to the gym. And always, what we're always trying to look for is trying to establish students that are college and career readiness and also to establish that they're living physically active lifestyles outside of our school. The comprehensive school physical activity program model is what we try to follow and providing opportunities for our students to have opportunities before school, after school, as well as during school with our curriculum. The one thing that I'd like to show you, this is a student perspective about Platform and as you can see from here, this is what a student would look like if they're going on to the Platform situation. The leaderboard is an interesting aspect as well. As you can see, we have some student athletes that currently are participating on some of our sports teams as well as within the physical education perspective. This provides them an opportunity to see how they're doing against other student athletes as well as students within the school, which is great. You'll see Khalid Kennedy, who's one of our wrestlers that I'll be highlighting in the future. You can see that it's based upon squat, bench, and clean are the three performance areas that they try to designate. And all the students can see and perform and see how they're performing as well against other people. So it's a great way to showcase, you know, a competitive edge as well as to see different exercise vaults and everything. These are different examples. Students can see videos of how to actually perform the physical skills if they're at the gym by themselves and have some questions, as well as our physical education teachers. This opens up, if we're providing opportunities during a class session, for our teachers to go around as well as to provide more instruction, as well as kids can see how to perform those skills necessarily as well. The second area within Priority One, Learning and Achievement, is our instructional technology. Our physical education as well as our health education teachers are doing a great job of integrating the Chromebooks within health and physical education. As I mentioned before, with the Platform Network, we use our Chromebooks to provide examples and tablets within our physical education setting for students to be able to see how to use the videos and perform the skills that they necessarily need. In health education at the middle school, we're currently using our Chromebooks to investigate diseases as well as to learn how to research appropriately. Students can also then see some target assessments and use their Chromebooks also as a way to make sure that they're meeting the assessments within the classes. So our teachers are doing a really good job of taking the instructional technology and applying it both from the health and physical education. More at the elementary level, you'll see different videos being displayed for topics that we're trying to give a live demonstration for, as well as showcasing some other areas that are, might be professional to the, applied to the setting for physical education with the skill level that they may be doing. So a perfect example, at the elementary school, our physical education teachers are also using the Chromebooks for students to get a live perspective of how to swing a bat and hit a baseball if they're doing a baseball unit. And then the kids can go and actually apply those skills and have those conversations amongst themselves as the teacher's walking around the classroom to make sure that he's providing instruction on the skill level as well. Our teachers are really taking that portion of instructional technology and really trying to apply it within the classroom setting. The next priority for learning and achievement, as I talked about more from a student perspective, I also wanted to highlight from a teacher's perspective. We're using Google Classroom currently right now to do a book study with our health and physical education teachers. As you know, as the Director of Health and Physical Education, we have four different buildings, so bringing all of those health and physical education teachers together can be hard at times. So using the Google Classroom as a platform for them to have some conversations about pedagogical content knowledge and instruction that's going on within their class has really helped to broaden their landscape of what's going on at the elementary schools as well as what's going at the middle schools and gives us an avenue for us to have some instructional conversations of how they're taking some skill levels and applying them within the classroom. The book that we're using is Teach Like a Pirate. I had an opportunity to see the head author, Dave Burgess, speak at the New York State Aiford Conference and he was very energetic. The book really concentrates on increasing student engagement and redesigning your lessons to make them more creative within the culture of physical education as well as health education. The next priority within health and physical education is our student life. I mentioned before a comprehensive school physical activity model, which we try to encompass within our Amherst model here as well. And that's looking, as I mentioned before, before-school opportunities for students to be physically active as well as during-school opportunities within our K-12 physical education setting. And then looking at opportunities after school as well. And so here are just some ideas and highlights that we currently do participate in from a K-12 perspective. As you can see, and I'll highlight the District Wellness Fair here shortly, but we had our District Wellness Fair that encompassed all four buildings this past year. We continue to have our elementary track meet that will run. We offer an intermarial sessions at all buildings from a K-12 perspective to give students opportunities. I'd like to highlight our K-5 field day that we currently do. Within our high school, we have our hands-only CPR and AED training that meets the state's mandates there. We also are providing a co-ed volleyball tournament that we had this past fall that was run by our boys and girls volleyball teams. We have a basketball three-on-three tournament that you can see that's run at the middle school as well as at the high school. So we're providing multiple opportunities for students to participate, not only within their athletic team, but in opportunities after school and before school on a recreational basis as well. The highlight I wanted to talk about tonight, obviously, as well is our Amherst Wellness Night that we offered this past year. As you can see, last year, we only offered this at Smallwood Drive School and this past year, we're able to offer it at the middle school. As I mentioned before, it encompasses all of our buildings, we're invited. I sent emails out to every single parent within the district as well as we had information on morning announcements at all the four schools, inviting everybody. Unfortunately, we had a winter weather that night, but we still had a good turnout here at the middle school. We had a chance to offer physical activity opportunities for families and for our employees as well in both the north gym and south gym here simultaneously, so we had six different sessions going on. We also had groups come in and being, as you can see from Damon, and at the end of the slide here as well, you saw dental wellness going through, so we had dental checks being provided to our students. And it was just a great evening that our health and physical education staff members came in and provided an opportunity for our district. Now, moving on to our athletic program, as I always like to mention, the mission statement within our athletic program is to foster the quest for excellence by creating an educational and competitive experience within an atmosphere of sportsmanship. We're always trying to create a great environment within our students and you'll always hear me say "education through athletics." We try to have that educational model and really ways for our students to learn life skills as well as leadership competencies during the course of their experiences here at Amherst and participating as our sports teams. We currently offer, at the high school, we have 314 teams. We have 26 different programs that we have during the course of the fall, winter, and spring seasons. In the middle school, we offer 19 teams, so it's 63 total teams that we have throughout the course of the fall, winter, and spring seasons. Just as a reminder, and I'll talk about it during our high school participation numbers, the middle school is only seventh and eighth graders that are applied, our sixth graders participate in our intermarial program. Our high school participation number for this past year, as you can see, we've had 314 student athletes participate in the fall sports season, 180 student athletes participate during the winter sports season, and then 267 currently at the high school participate in the spring sport. When I looked at the data also, there's 55% of our students participate in at least one sport out of our entire high school population. So that's great in comparison to other school districts as well. And as you can see from the data too here, some of the numbers look like they're going down. One area that I'd like to point out is since we instituted the Tiger Gala and since I've taken over, I've done a little bit more of diving in to make sure that we had appropriate numbers and rosters because when we give out our end-of-the-year awards, we want to make sure that it's right and make sure that it's done properly as well. So that has been a reflection of the numbers as well, making sure that we're just cleaning up our policies and procedures on our expectations of looking at our awards by the end. Our middle school numbers, as you can see, for this past year, we had 173 student athletes participate during the fall sports season, 83 student athletes in the seventh and eighth grade participated in the winter season, and then we currently have 189 student athletes participating during the spring season. For the seventh and eighth grade population, that's 53% in the middle school, so that's really good as well too. The second priority is our student life and one of the things that fall underneath the student life from the strategic plan was our student-teacher relationships. So this is our second year of doing our Captain's Club. This year, we did a book study and teaching some of the important aspects of what the best do better than everyone else. And applying our Training Camp book, who they authored from John Gordon, applying those skills that we read throughout the course of the book and talking about how to apply them from a captain's perspective, as well as to apply it during your life. And I have Devon Franz here, who I'm going to call on up because as you can see, he's one of my quotes here. Devon is a three-sport athlete for us and a senior here at the high school. He's in his second year with Captain's Club, so I saw him yesterday as he was pole vaulting. He asked me how the Board of Education presentation went and I said, you know what? It's not till tomorrow. So he's like, do you mind if I come and read my quote? And I said, I'd love for you to come and read your quote and then expand it a little bit more. So he's going to give you a little bit more of an authentic of what Captain's Club has done for him hopefully and how he applies it within his setting.
Go ahead, read your quote.
So I'm Devon, as Dr. Ilk explained, and my quote was, "Captain's Club taught me, when you apply determination, when you apply..." Captain's Club taught me, when you apply determination, positivity, passion to what you do, the results will end in your favor. And to me, this doesn't just apply to sports, but honestly, anything you do in life. Everyone has their ups and downs and if you keep a positive attitude and you use your passion to drive, if you use your passion to motivate you to continue doing what you're doing, your end results will end in your favor. And I was brought into Captain's Club this year and freshman year, sophomore year, and junior year, I get to school relatively early. I'd always walk by the multipurpose room and I see my friends and I say, man, I wonder what they're doing here. Then when Dr. Ilk asked me to join, I realized that they were in Captain's Club and for me to be asked to be in it was a real honor because I am a captain of volleyball, swimming, and track. And Captain's Club has been a way for me to expand on how to further myself as a captain and not just in sports, but also in the classroom. There was a time during Captain's Club where we were talking about learning how to not give up and during our swim season, we were hitting a complete downhill, people were leaving the team, we were down in numbers and we were losing meats. And when we were talking about having grit and being knocked down and then pushing through that, that really showed that I could talk to the team and say, hey, we can't put our heads down. We have to pull each other up and continue to strive through what we're facing. And then we ended a pretty good season and that's pretty good. So that's really what Captain's Club taught me. Thank you.
Thank you. Dress is better than I do too, so. Yeah, and then... Yeah, and then, so as Devon really mentioned, you know, it's ecstatic for me to hear that, because that's really why I started captains' club. You know, I found through observing our student athletes and talking and building positive relationships with our kids, one area that we're missing is you always hear people say, or coaches, or people within the classroom, "You need to be a better leader," but we need to teach our students how to be leaders, and the appropriate way to lead. So I'm very passionate about that, and that's one area that I take pride in, is building those positive relationships with our kids, and to hear that is very moving. So, thank you. Moving forward, so one area that I talked about is creating that environment for our student athletes. And creating a positive environment for our student athletes to excel in is one of the areas that I want to highlight. During our student life, we want to recognize our student athletes as much as we possibly can during the course of the season. One avenue that we do is our athlete of the week. So each week, we select a male and female athlete of the week. Devon happened to be one of those during the course of the winter season for swimming as well. Students are given shirts, they're put on announcements, so they're recognized in front of their peers as well, and it gives the chance for us to highlight student athletes that are doing exceptional jobs each week for each team. And as I mentioned, it's just one way for us to have our students and to praise them for all their work. We also have a board that you see there that's outside of our gymnasium that is up all year with the students' pictures, so that they can be shown in front of their peers and being nominated and recommended as a student athlete of the week. The next that I'd like to talk about is our senior recognition. Now, this was from last year. Last year, we started a senior recognition. We had 16 student athletes who went on to play at the Division I, Division II, and Division III level, as well as Juco. So we put together at the spring, after my presentation from last year, a chance to bring all of them together and thank them for their hard work and dedication during the course of their senior, junior, and their tenure here at Amherst, also to showcase, you know, the hard work and dedication that they're planning to go on to the next level. It's just another way to recognize their hard work and their dedication, bring their families in, as well as to say thank you for everything that you have done, and to let them know that we appreciate and look forward to all the great things that they're going to be doing in college. And the last is our Amherst Tiger Gala. We started this last year. Here's a slideshow of our end-of-the-season awards. We also re-instituted our Hall of Fame that hasn't been done in seven years. So it was a great night that we had at the Buffalo-Neymar Convention Center last year. We gave out our most improved, most valuable, as well as our coaches' award for each team from the junior varsity and varsity level. Student, seniors are invited, as well as all of our 9th through 12 student athletes who have played on junior varsity and varsity team. As you can see from here, we try to make it a fun event. Our kids dress up, they get a chance to be recognized in front of their peers once again for our end-of-the-year celebration. It was our first time that we ever did something like that last year. I'm excited to announce that we're doing it again this year, so we're really looking forward to nominating our next Hall of Fame nominees, as well as having our students celebrate their end-of-the-year accomplishments together once again. The next piece is our Amherst Pride. One area within our athletic program is our service to our community, and I think our athletic program does a wonderful job. And these are just three areas that I just wanted to highlight. Obviously, we have teams that do other community services throughout the course of the year, but the first I'd like to talk about is our baseball program. Our baseball program put on two clinics with the Amherst Central Little League this past spring, and as you can see, we had some younger students within our community that were participating, learning different skills from our student athletes and coaches, and it really gives our students a chance to be role models within younger students within our district. It was a great experience that they had. The second piece that you can see from here, as well, is that our coaches put on a coaching clinic for our youth sports teams within Central Amherst Little League, so that parents who are volunteering have the proper skills, as well as the knowledge base within our community, to apply those skills within the Central Amherst Little League from a baseball The next team I wanted to highlight as well is our basketball team. Coach Kenzie and his staff do a wonderful job during the summer of providing a camp here at Amherst that you can see from here as well. They do a wonderful job of getting our student athletes as well to participate in that event, as well as to work with our youth, to make sure that they're applying those skills. The event that you can see here as well is the empathy program that happened at Windermere that was part of our cheerleading team with Mrs. Mazurik and Windermere, and our basketball team coming together to talk about empowering empathy at Windermere through the superhero day, as well as our student athletes had a chance to interact, you know, show some of their skills in front of Windermere student athletes, and really talk about what empowers empathy for them as role models. And the last, I mentioned them before, so you'll see them here as well, is our cheerleading team. Our cheerleading team, I don't think gets enough credit for all of the community service and time that they put in and try and create a wonderful and engaging environment at our competitions, as well as through homecoming and other events that they do during the course of the school year. Our cheerleading team, as you can see here, participated not only in homecoming events at both Windermere and Smallwood with our football program, but they also participated in the superhero day with our basketball team, and they do a wonderful job of providing a great environment for our community at events. So I really wanted to highlight them for all the work that they do. And now, to further our Amherst Pride, I just really wanted to highlight some of the great accomplishments from this past fall and winter season. Seen here, you can see we have four student athletes who qualified for the New York State Public High School State Athletic Association Swing Championships. It was the first time in the past decade that we had a team, a relay team, being sent to states. So we have Paige Smith, Caroline Smith, Grace Van Barren, and Carolyn DeBolt, who were nominated. Grace Van Barren also qualified in another skill level as well. Our girls' field hockey team won the Section VI Class B championship this past fall as the number-four seed. They upset Iroquois in the semifinals, and then defeated Williamsburg East in the championship game, knocking them off. This is their second championship in the past three years, so it was great to see them come from the number-four seed and knock off two higher seeds as well. Morgan Holt qualified for the New York Public High School State Athletic Association Cross Country Finals that were held in Rochester. She did a wonderful job of representing Section VI and Amherst in that event. This is a great picture of her teammate sending her off prior to the event in her front sign there. Our girls' bowling team were the ECIC North Large School Champions. They had an undefeated season. They are also the Section VI Class B Champions. Pictured from left to right, you can see Kelly Normandin, Kara Braun, Kelly, Rachel Banning, I apologize, Quinta Seaco, Tess Weber, and Caitlin Banning. So they all participated together as our Section VI Class B Champions. Kelly Normandin, on the left there, qualified for the New York State Public High School Championship as well from an individual to represent Section VI. And then our girls' basketball team, repeated this past year, are Section VI Class A2 Champions. They did a wonderful job again, going through the playoffs, defeating Lake Shore in the semifinals, and then beating Iroquois in the finals. Kalid Kennedy was a Section VI 285-pounder. He was one of the guys I referenced about the weightlifting, and he was one of our leaderboards. Well, he was on the leaderboard because he's 285 pounds, one of our weakest kids at our middle school, so. But he did a wonderful job. You know, he had a chance to defeat the number-one seed in the Section VI Class Championships, a student athlete who he lost to six times in a row prior to that. So he really stepped up. I love this picture as well, because you can see all his teammates cheering him on and the passion of our coaches as well. It really showcases the environment that a wrestling program has, as well as what we try to empower our student athletes to have as well. The great news too with Kalid is he finished and actually placed at the New York State Public High School State Athletic Association Tournament. He placed fifth. You could see him on the far left there. It's the first time since 1993 that we had anyone place in the large school division. Kellen Devlin, who was our former state champion, was in the small school division, so it's a great accomplishment for Kalid this past year. Now, we had Mexana Grob and Jamelia Mallory also qualified for the New York State Public High School State Athletic Association Indoor Championships. They did a wonderful job on Long Island, participating. This is their second year enrolled that they qualified for that as well. Another point of emphasis that I always like to showcase is our pride of ours, is our academic accomplishments as well for our individual senior scholar athletes. For those students to be recognized as a senior scholar athlete, they have to have a 90 or above for six semesters. So during the fall, we had Jacob Bujeria for cross country, Emily Ahuna for soccer, Caroline Smith for swimming, Nicole Moore during the winter season, Kelly Normandin for bowling, and then Rachel Banning was a two-time winner for field hockey and bowling. Another great accomplishment is our New York State Public High School Scholar-Athlete Team Award. As you can see there, we have 16 teams that qualified. That's great news. We had 15 teams last year, so we were able to increase that this past year, and that only is our fall and winter, so we're waiting for the spring season to happen again as well. Another point of emphasis and a great pride is our National Letter of Intent signings. So we will have one student athlete who will be signing, who is verbally committed to play softball next year at the University of Buffalo, and that's Hannah Bardine. So she'll be signing her National Letter of Intent this upcoming end of April. So it's a wonderful job. She's had a great career, and we're looking for great things, obviously, during the spring for softball season with her as well. I can't thank enough our partnerships that we currently have built, especially with our Amherst Tiger Booster Club. You know, their goal and mission really is to enhance our athletic program and the environment, create a better environment for our student athletes, and they have done a wonderful job. Point of emphasis that I like to point out is their collaboration with the PTSA at the middle school, high school, for the banners that are up at the high school right now and will be installed at the middle school. They did a great job with fundraising and getting that applied. They donated a scoreboard this past year, portable scoreboard for our grass fields. They continue to help with the posters that you have here in front of you as well to support those, and they're doing a wonderful job of creating a better environment for our student athletes, so I can't thank them enough for all their hard work and dedication as well. And the last part is under Amherst Pride and our strategic plan is public relations, and I always like to say, "Once a Tiger, always a Tiger." I take great pride in following up with our student athletes as they go on to the next level, the next level. I apologize. So Amadi Kapizzi, as you know, is in his sophomore year at St. Bonaventure. He ended up starting numerous games for him towards the end of the season. Amadi had a great opportunity to play in the NCAA tournament this past year as well. This is him pictured in the Buffalo News against UCLA. Coach Kenzie and myself and the staff had a great opportunity to drive to Dayton and see him. He was very excited to see us at the game, and we had a great chance, obviously, to see him after the game after he won it, and then went on to, obviously, the first round. So he's doing a wonderful job at St. Bonaventure academically and athletically there as well. Our next is Mark Rubin, who is currently on Wall Street. Mark Rubin came back to us for our athletic kickoff this past year to talk to our student athletes in the fall about his accomplishments. He's very successful on Wall Street. Now, he also talked about how Amherst has prepared him for his life and his athletic career, and he did a wonderful job of coming back, so I wanted to showcase Mark Rubin there as well. McKenna Rushford is currently at the University of Cincinnati for women's lacrosse. She's in her sophomore season. She's currently second on the team in total points and goals scored. She's doing a wonderful job of representing herself academically and athletically, so we're looking for great things. She was nominated as midfielder of the week from the Big East Conference. My wife and I will have a great opportunity to go see her. Actually, at the end of April, we're going to take a trip down to Cincinnati and see her and her family, so really looking forward to that as well. Emily Bitka is currently ranked in the top 10 in goals against and save percentage at Slippery Rock University. She was just, if you go on Slippery Rock, I just tweeted it actually today, she was actually nominated for player of the week for her conference as well, so she's doing a great job in her senior year at Slippery Rock University. We also have two student athletes who are at Mercy-Harris University. Angelina Simons pictured right here, as well as Grace Lawson. Mercy-Harris is currently ranked in the top 20 as a Division II girls' lacrosse program, so we have two student athletes who currently start for him, are doing a wonderful job. And Cameron Sullivan, who was pictured prior, is in her freshman year. She was also nominated for Women's Lacrosse Rookie of the Week for her conference at Jefferson University in Philadelphia. And last, I just wanted to thank, obviously, the Board of Education and our community for our construction process that's going on in our capital project that's going to be happening during the course of the spring right now, as well as during the summer. Thank you for your support. We're looking for great things to come out of that, and we have a great plan that's happening right now that we're all working together and communicating with our community to make sure that we're up and running for the start of our fall sports season there. So, thank you. Any questions?
I have a question. If I can ask a question. Am I allowed to ask a question?
Can't you see me tomorrow?
So, I like the Tiger Gala, and I was wondering if you ever considered making a fall one, a winter one, and a spring one? Because sometimes the students are talking about how they do multiple sports, and they don't know what team to sit with there, or the fact that they only do one sport, and they're wondering, "Why am I staying here for the entire thing when I only do one sport?" I mean, I'd rather do one at the end of the year, because you get to see everyone, but a lot of people, when we did it last year, were talking about how we should do it three for fall, winter, and spring, because fall sport people feel like, "Why am I sitting here for spring when I do football and not track?"
It's great. So one of the important aspects that I always talk about is that creating that environment in front of your peers, right? So a lot of our student athletes don't know if you're only participating in the fall compared to the spring, right? And we're always looking for ways to improve it. It was our first year last year, so you're going to see some different changes during the course of the event this upcoming year that's going to engage and get a little bit more people involved, so that you're not having student athletes saying, "Why am I sitting through the entire fall while I'm waiting for everything when I'm a spring student athlete?" So you'll see there's some changes. I always appreciate the feedback as well. But the important aspect is, I really want our student athletes to be recognized in front of their peers. So even if you're a fall student athlete, the spring student athlete should know all the accomplishments that our fall student athletes are doing, because as I keep going back to, and I keep talking, we're one community where one Tiger comes from, right? Is embracing that design of being one community within our student athletes.
Yeah, I completely agree. And also, in captains' club, in the very beginning of the year, he has us introduce ourselves and say, obviously, he has us introduce ourselves and say what sports you play, so that everyone there knows that you're not just doing one sport, but multiple.
Any other questions?
Good job. No, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks. Very well done. Devon, thank you for being here and providing that quote.
Thank you.
Well done. Mrs. Bezinski, we have the, one of the final budget updates. We'll still visit fund balance and reserves in June, but tonight we have a proposed budget for the board to consider through a verbal poll, and it's after we clarify our proposed budget, and if the board is accepting of it, then we'll have it on as a resolution for them to adopt next time at our meeting next week. So this is one of the final budget presentations of the year.
Yes, thank you. It has been a long budget development process, but successful, and a great team effort in that everyone is involved in the development of our budget, from central administration to the building-level administration, all of our directors, as well as the administrative assistants and our teachers. Everyone has input in the budget so that we can get as much data and information as possible from all of our stakeholders, so that we're meeting all of our needs for next year, as well as being physically responsible to our community. So tonight, we will review again. Changes R and B. It's very similar to the last presentation, but we now have our final information that we'll use to make our recommendation to the board for our adopted budget, and what we will then present to our voters in May. On the revenue side, our State A projections did come in, and we did see an increase of about $140,000 in the legislative budget over the executive budget. Of course, we always want a little bit more, but those numbers are right. Of course, we always want a little bit more, but those numbers are right in line with our projections where we thought we were planned. We did anticipate seeing an increase in fund balance and a decrease in BOSI's aid and building need based on prior-year expenditures, and those numbers came in right in line with our anticipated figures. For transfers, we're recommending moving $60,000 from our tax cert reserve into our revenue budget. $20,000 of that is what we appropriate annually for any tax changes in tax bills, and that's a budget line on the appropriation side. We increased it this year to $60,000 because we received $40,000 worth of changes in tax bills that happened during this year's tax collection process so that we don't see a loss in revenue in the current year. We're able to pay that in next year's budget, so we can incorporate it into next year's budget and plan for it better. And that's what that reserve is set aside for. We're also recommending $200,000 from our employee benefit accrue liability reserve, which is an increase from $100,000 from 2018. So we did have $100,000 allocated this year, and we're recommending increasing that to 200 for next year. For the use of unappropriated fund balance, all along we've been maintaining a $500,000 contingency line on the revenue side and the appropriation side to handle any unexpected expenditures in health insurance or anything that might come up. And appropriating the fund balance to cover that contingency allows us to increase our appropriation budget without impacting our taxpayers. And then that left us with an overall gap of about $480,000 that we are recommending to use unappropriated fund balance. This past year, we used $429,000. We are anticipating not using our fund balance that we appropriated for this year. So overall, our allocated fund balance and reserves for 2018 is just over 1.2 million, which is a slight increase over a current year of just over 1 million. So this left our revenue projections with an overall increase in state aid of just over 3%. So this is higher than what you may have seen in our state aid reports or reported in the Buffalo News. We are anticipating a BOSI's project at the end of this year for technology upgrades in our replacement cycle of about $300,000, and that will yield roughly $200,000 additional aid next year in BOSI's aid. So that wouldn't be in our state aid runs because no one at the state knows about that yet. So what we do, so we add it so that we're not budgeting a shortfall when we know that that aid will be coming in next year.
And that is a planned project that is worked into the technology department's budget for hardware obsolescence and replacement. We've actually held off on it up until this point because we've been monitoring our healthcare expenditures to see if we were in fact had the ability to make those purchases in technology or if we were going to need those funds to cover some overages in healthcare. And as we've been monitoring that, it looks like we'll be able to move forward with the project and purchase the hardware.
And that dollar amount has been included in our fund balance projections that we've presented to for the past two meetings. So overall, that leaves our revenue budget at $58,552,000. Without the $480,000 in fund balance that we're using to close our gap, that's a 1.3% increase in revenues. With that fund balance, it comes in at just over 2%. On the expenditure side, we did have a few minor changes. ERS, the rate had already been set. I highlighted this in blue because we did have one additional support staff retirement, which allowed us to decrease our ERS budget by another $3,000, which ended up yielding about a $13,000 decrease over the current year. And our health insurance is highlighted in blue, even though there's no change to our budget. Our current year budget is 6.2 million. We've been projecting 6.7 million, and we have been working with our consultants to possibly look at our vendor setup and our prescription vendor to try to lower costs for next year. We do feel that we've been successful in that, and we'll be looking at those changes starting in July with very, very minimal impact to our members, but that will allow us to come in at our budgeted amount with our projections of about 6.7 million, which is a $500,000 increase over current year, but that's about what we're spending, projecting to spend this year, so we think that we'll stay there again next year. Didn't have any changes in these general support, instruction, or BOSI's. Anything that was changed was very minor. The retirement was one more support staff, so we now have seven retirements, and our total salary brokerage across instructional and non-instructional salaries was about Our staff reductions remain the same, and again, those were reductions based on attrition retirements and changing student needs. So on our expenditure projections, our personnel expenditures are projected at a 1.23 increase, which is less than one and a quarter, so we were really pleased with that. Our benefits is up about 6.9%. The general support number is changed by that $40,000 we increased for the tax cert payment. And our BOSI's line, it was 11%, it's still 11%. We made some very minor changes, I think it was only a couple thousand dollars, as BOSI's finalized some of their numbers and we were able to finalize ours based on enrollment and current needs. Our projections stayed very true to our projections. Again, our appropriated, our appropriations is $58,552,000, which is an increase of 1.25 million over current year and an increase of 2.18% in spending. So overall, we have now balanced budgets.
I'd just like to point out, you know, in the current year, as we've talked about with our fund balance projections, I know that's forthcoming here, but just as a prelude, we have about $1.2 million appropriated in the current year's budget from fund balance and reserves, and we've talked all along that our intent was not to spend that because our reserves are healthy at 7.2 million, but we're targeting 8 million to maintain good ratings and good borrowing power as we go out with our capital project in the future. But we're, what Mrs. Wazinski will show you, is we're on target to not only not spend the $1.2 million, but also potentially increase our fund balance and reserves by a little bit over 200,000. So as we look at the current year's budget, we're asking you to appropriate $480,000 from fund balance and another 260 from reserves. As we move into next year, our goal would be to monitor the budget and not spend that, but we're asking you to appropriate that to balance our budget because again, our budget is built on projections, and we'd rather be conservative with our projections as opposed to underestimating our projections and then having, you know, very difficult decisions to make that could affect kids as we move into next school year. So although we're asking you to appropriate almost a million dollars from fund balance and reserves, our goal will be not to spend it as we monitor next year's budget unless there's unplanned expenditures, you know, that are extremely high that we can't prevent.
So in summary, we have a 1.3% increase in revenue, and with our fund balance appropriation, it moves to just over 2%. We do have a balanced budget using $500,000 of unappropriated fund balance to offset our $500,000 contingency, which was the same as this year, an additional $480,000 to close our gap, and then 260 from our reserves, which is our EBLR and our tax cert reserve. And the areas that we projected as options to close our gap, we used a little bit from all of them. We did see an increase in state aid of 140,000. We did have some staff reductions, but they were based on retirement attritions and changing student programming, fund balance appropriation, and some appropriation from reserves.
And our state aid, just to highlight, is still insufficient for what we need for our operating budget. We're really, I believe, doing a nice job keeping our spending under, you know, almost 2% from year to year. We're not adding programs. It's mostly contractual things that are causing our year-to-year expense increases, and the state has not really met their end of the bargain in terms of providing us with the aid that we need in order to balance our budget. So, you know, we'll continue our advocacy efforts, you know, even now, even though the budget was just adopted by the legislator and into the fall as we look to next year's budget, because there are estimates out there that suggest that our foundation aid is underfunded by close to $5 million based on how the formula was originally enacted and what it was intended to provide us with.
So as Mr. Penella mentioned, we will review our fund balance projection, and this is again the same format that we used last time, where we'll look at our actual revenues and our projection for the next four, three months, April, May, and June. We project our revenues to come in about $340,000 higher than what we had budgeted. We did receive about $180,000 worth of tuition reimbursement that we had not budgeted for, so that's why that number is increased. Without using any appropriated fund balance for this year, that would leave us with a revenue deficit of 942, but our goal is to not use that fund balance appropriation. On the expenditure side, we are under our expenditure budget by about 1.15 million, and again, those are conservative numbers using projections for April, May, and June. Health insurance is always a big question mark, so we want to make sure that we're careful. But overall, it leaves us without using any of our fund balance and that budgetary surplus of just over $200,000. With that, our year-end was 7.2 million in June, with our change in revenues and expenditures with a budgetary surplus of $200,000, but leave our projected ending fund balance for this year at 7.4 million.
I'd just like to highlight, I know some of the numbers, you know, stand out as significant dollars, but when you go, if you can go back a slide, you know, we have 1.1 million in unexpended funds in our current year, that is less than 2%. So kudos to the board and the team because that means you're budgeting with 98% accuracy. And again, being self-funded with our healthcare, that means we're trying to predict what's going to happen medically with our employees and their families at this time next year when we're adopting our budget. So I think we're doing a very good job with our projections, and we're being responsible to the community and providing our kids with a top-notch education.
And the difference in revenue was 0.6%, very close. So again, this is three-quarters of the year. We still have three more months to put on the books. We will have another fund balance projection for you on the first meeting in June, and at that time, we'll also review our long-range plan for our reserves, and we'll take a look at our current levels, what our projections are, and what our goals are for each of the reserves, and then we'll have the discussion on where we would want to place any of those So if there are no questions or no other changes, this would be our last budget presentation, and we would ask the board to approve our budget on April 17th at the board meeting by resolution, and our budget hearing for the public will be prior to our board meeting on May 1st, where we'll be able to answer questions and present to the community.
I just have a question about, in addition to underfunding, you know, where they should be, have they also, did they increase the oversight and you now have to report expenditures by building or something?
Yeah, it won't affect us until the 1920 school year. They're looking to phase that in, so next year, it applies to districts that have at least four schools and get 50% of their revenue in state aid, which is not us. The following year, it applies to districts that have at least four schools, and then the year after that, it applies to everyone. So we have very little guidance on it at this point, but what I've read suggests that there'll be a July 1st due date, and the state will provide a template that we will fill in.
We also have additional reporting requirements for our reserves and our budget, our budget notice that is sent to all of our community members, which we include in our budget newsletter, will also now include information as of the end of the third quarter of the current fiscal year on our reserves. So that's new this year, and that'll be submitted to all of our community members.
Any other questions? All right, then I need to poll the board on the budget. Mr. Smith, I'll start with you. Are you okay with this budget?
Yes, your vote.
Mr. Smith?
Absolutely. Thank you for the additional.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice job. Thank you. So as Mrs. Wazinski indicated, we'll have a resolution next meeting without the 19 budget. Well done. The last item in the superintendent's report is actually a discussion from President Steinle regarding the potential exit poll in the upcoming budget vote. So I think there's really two questions that need to be answered. Would the board like to continue with exit polling? And then if the answer is yes, are there any changes to the existing poll that you'd like to see made?
I will ask my first question. Do we want to continue with this? We've been doing it now, how many years? So I think, personally, I think it provides us some good benchmarking data, you know, when we start looking at budgeting or different things, so I would like to continue with it myself. Does anyone have any suggestions for changes to any of the questions? We've made a few minor tweaks here and there over the five years, but...
Yeah, I think it's good.
Okay, all right. Keep it as is.
I think we can do questions as consistent as possible. Is this a good term?
I agree.
Okay, that's the end of the superintendent's report.
All right. And we'll need a motion for new business then.
I'll make a motion for new business items. F1A through I, 2A through D, and 3D. Please say aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Ms. Castoli, do we have any follow-up action? All right, then we will need a motion to convene to executive session.
I'll make a motion to convene to executive session for matters regarding employment of a particular person.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone, for coming. I can believe we can make more.